Thank you, sir. Good evening, everyone. Welcome back. Good to see you all. I call out of recess Lee County Zoning Board of Appeals hearing on petition number 21P 1566. South Dixon Solar LLC's request for a special use permit to construct a solar energy system in South Dixon Township here in Lee County. In case you've lost it and you're somehow listening to us in another, on another medium, the Zoom meeting ID is 915-3923-9154. The password is 209840. If you want to, Zoom will allow you to participate. If you really want to watch and listen to us but not participate, you can do so on YouTube on your computer or cellphone. Use your browser to go to www.youtube.com. In the search bar, type Lee County, L I L for short for Illinois, zoning board of appeals. No need to be concerned with upper lowercase letters. Find the session date you want. Presumably that's this evening, October 27th. Click on that and you should be able to see and hear us. If you are challenged on any of these things, you can call Ms. Duffy's technical assistance hotline, If you're lucky, she will answer it herself. I will note for our record that tonight I see the presence of vice chair of the zoning board of appeals, Mr. Burrow. Mr., both these present, Mr. Hughes is present, as is Mr. Meyer. Ms. Duffy is indeed graced her with, graced us with her presence, as has the renewable energy coordinator, Alice Henkel. Fine State Street, Mr. Bootsstress here. Ms. Kennedy representing the petitioner is present along with one, two, maybe three of representatives of the petitioner's representatives. Our IT pro, Zach is present. Port Porter's present, himself is present. And we have let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. I count 10 either necessaries or interested parties. That means we have in the hearing room tonight, 21 people. I remind everyone under the governor's current executive order, all persons two years of age or older, except those who have a disability as defined by the Americans with Disability Act, which may apply to me tonight, are required to wear a face mask covering their nose and mouth when in an indoor public space such as this, regardless of whether or not they're maintaining a social distance of more than six feet or not. At this point, if you're in the courtroom, please turn your cell phones off or at least to silent. Thank you for your cooperation with these things. And as I recall, when last we left off, the petitioner finished presenting its evidence. Ms. Duffy had spent a few minutes presenting evidence. And that leaves us to interested parties. I know I say this ad nauseam. I know it is, it probably, probably rates on some people's nerves. But the time to testify when you're under oath is time to testify to facts, not to give your opinion. You can give your opinion, but that will come, the time for that will come in closing arguments or public comments. So if anything you have tonight starts with, I think, or I believe, or you should, or don't accept the fact, all those are arguments that they're perfectly fine to make when the time comes. Tonight, when you testify as an interested party, let's stick to facts, please. So with that, any interested parties? I think I'll start with in the courtroom, raising your hand. Yes, sir, you may. We've got a good microphone set, yeah, right ahead of you there. Go raise your right hand, please, do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give? Be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Yeah, actually, I didn't want to testify myself. I wanted to call a witness.
Oh, sure.
On Zoom, we have Dr. Ron Heinger, Heineger.
Okay.
So I'd like to have him present over Zoom. He's also, he's also presented a PowerPoint that he can share, or I also have on a USB drive, if you want it done.
Well, let's, let's take that one step at a time. Yes, we do need your name though, since we're making a record.
Jim Turner.
All right. I forgot the gentleman you said you wanted to call, Dr.
Ron Heineger.
Dr. Heineger, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Certainly can now. Are you, do you know how to share whatever PowerPoint you've got on screen here?
If you could see my face, I could share. I'm going to scream it through the same, same video you're receiving, basically.
Okay, let's, before you start testifying and I put you under oath, let's, let's give it a test.
Okay.
Show me the first page of, show us the first page of what you've got, just to test the technology.
Okay, there's the first page of what I got. Can you see that?
Can you make that any bigger, Zach?
Yeah.
Just a minute, don't, don't, don't talk on top of each other, doctor. So we've got a court reporter taking down everything. So, so it's very hard for it to take two people talking at once. All right. Okay. Dr. Heuninger, you want to raise your right hand, please? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give be the truth, whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, I'll, I'll help you get started, Mr. Turlock. Doctor, state your name and your, your profession, please.
I'm Dr. Ron Heineger. I'm a professor at, in the crop and soil science department at North Carolina State University.
All right, would you spell your last name for us, please?
Yes, it's H E I N I G E R.
Thank you. And let's talk about your education in a minute. Where did you receive your undergraduate degree?
My undergraduate degree was received at Kansas State University.
When?
In 1976.
Right, how about your masters?
My masters was also, all three of my degrees, undergraduate, masters and PhD all come from Kansas State University.
Okay, and then what, what discipline did you receive your, in what discipline did you receive your doctorate?
My discipline is agronomy and particularly my specialty or the, the degree that I got was in crop and water simulation.
Okay, and what year did you receive that?
In 1994.
Right. Have you testified in? Well, first, have you testified in courtrooms before?
Yes, I have, many, many times.
How many times would you guess?
Oh, gosh. I'm guessing 40 times, maybe a few more.
Okay, and have you been accepted as an expert in, in those proceedings?
Yes, in every single proceeding.
Okay, have you testified in, I'll call them renewable energy zoning hearings previously?
Yes, I have.
About how many times?
Oh, probably 25 or 30, maybe more. Most of my testimonies have been around this issue.
All right. I don't know where you want to take this, Mr. Turlock, so you take from there and ask your witness any questions you might have of him.
Mr. Heineger, are you being paid to present tonight?
No, I am not.
Did you, did you prepare a PowerPoint to present tonight?
Yes, I did. I prepared a PowerPoint that covers what I think are a few of the key issues that this board needs to consider.
Okay, can you present that to the court, please?
Yes.
Well, it's not a court, we're talking about the zoning board.
I'm in a court.
And I'm not trying to be picky. I want him to understand this.
Yep, understood. Okay.
Right, yes, I. Okay, well, I appreciate, let me just first say, I appreciate being allowed to speak here tonight. I think this is a critical issue that some of the decisions you're making here.
Well, let's not, let's not give a speech. We're not going to talk about what they should or shouldn't be.
All right, we'll not give speeches here. It's hard to talk without speaking. Yeah, you're talking to an extension person there, so that's a very difficult thing. All right, well, here's a fact. Solar power facilities need the same thing that farms do, sunlight and land. These two issues are in conflict. That's why you're in this process here and why this process is going on in numerous communities across the United States today. And when those two issues conflict, you must make a decision. What is the best use of a limited resource, which is our land? Decision will change this community that you're in. Those are facts.
No, that's not a fact, sir. Let's, let's stop expressing your opinion and stick to facts.
No, I have data that supports that, so indeed.
Well, tell us your data, not your opinion, please.
My data is, comes from communities that have had this happen in North Carolina. So that's where my data comes from. I'm just, I'm going to focus on what I think are the land issues here tonight. And so let me just focus on those if I can do so. Key issues that are related as far as your land resource goes with solar power generation. And by the way, I'm not against solar facilities. I'm very much in favor of as much solar as we can. It's placing it is the key here. So let's review what are the problems that face solar power generation on farmland. First of all, there's a problem of vegetation control. And I'll cover that here in just a second. Second is the problem with long and short impacts on land preparation, particularly water control. I think that is a key issue that this needs to address here. And then finally, we'll, I'll visit a little bit about decommissioning and making sure that you get the best information possible here. So let me go right into this. Nature makes the most use of its available resources, light and water, which means that when you place a facility such as this that only capture 20 to 24% of the incoming solar radiation, there is going to be a constant fight against vegetation, which means that vegetation control is going to be a primary issue around these facilities. They're going to face that, that we see it here in North Carolina. This is a facility here in North Carolina that you see is, is struggling with vegetation control. The current methods for controlling vegetation under solar power facilities are Boeing and herbicides. Those are the two key things that they have at their disposal, tools they have at their disposal to, to do vegetation and weed control. The issues, as you could see here in this facility here in North Carolina, are the ability to manage those tools in a way that's friendly or at least applicable to the environment. Here, they, they got herbicide damage to their, to their windscreen cover or their screening cover that they had to plant around the facility here. This is, we see these kinds of things happen all the time. This is a constant struggle and one that many facilities have had to give up on. In fact, we see facilities being.
Let's stick to facts, sir, please.
What, I can't see with my own eyes here?
No, you're, you're pontificating. Let's stick to facts, please.
Anyway, here's a fact. This is what we have gotten is this constant issues about how do we control weeds under these facilities? And here they talk about the use of a soil sterilant, which of course is a long-term implication on sterilizing vegetation on these soils, which will have carryover into succeeding years. So this is, as you could see, we deal with these issues here all the time. So that's a fact. The second issue that I want to point out and probably the most damaging issue here is the issue that surrounds this idea of water control on these facilities. Most of these facilities are under, what in Illinois is agriculture impact mitigation agreement that suggests that they use all water conservation service experts and, and equations to determine how much water will leave a facility. We have done a number of studies. I have two papers in review right now from those studies. What we did was we constructed mockups or models of solar facilities and we use rainfall simulators and then measured actual runoff. What we found was that the, the equations, the factors that the Soil Water Conservation Service uses in their equations are off by almost a factor of two. And this makes a lot of sense when you think about the nature of what is a solar farm. It's basically small roofs over the land. These roofs channel water and therefore the time of concentration of rainfall, which is basically represented by the time it takes for precipitation falling at the head of a property to leave that property through its drainage ways. The time of concentration is almost a half or half of the time of concentration that the Soil Water Conservation Service calculates. This increases the velocity of the flow of water and also increases the volume of water that leaves the facility. If I may, I would like to present an evidence, a video that, from a county, Louisa County in, in Virginia, where we had made this recommendation that they increase their holding pond retention. And unfortunately, they did not take that recommendation and, and I would like to show the consequences of that, if I might.
No, because there's no evidence about holding ponds in this particular proposed project.
Well, they should be. They should be considering holding pods in this particular project to make sure they mitigate this off flow of water.
All right, but, but a video showing the result of, on a, on a holding pond is, is not relevant because there's no holding pond in evidence here.
Well, I'm, all I'm trying to show is the consequences of not taking into account the proper equations, factors for these equations in calculating time of concentration and volume of runoff water leaving these properties. That's all I'm trying to show.
Your honor, if I may, I believe that the video shows the effect of runoff, which is a part of the petition. So I think that it is pertinent.
What he said was, I have a video showing runoff into a holding pond. That's.
No, no, I didn't.
It's not exactly what he said.
No, that's not what I said. I said runoff from a solar facility that has holding ponds.
Has holding ponds. Well, okay, go ahead.
All right, here we go.
Some Louisa County farmers say a new solar energy project is destroying their properties, often leaving them underwater. Tonight, our Laura French's months-long Problem Solvers investigation.
What she uncovered, who is calling the project catastrophic? What steps have been taken and the future of those projects in the county?
This property's been in our family for four generations.
Bobby Marks has always called Louisa County home.
Oh, it's no price on it. It's, it's real, it's valuable to us.
You got some big trees down here, too.
Marks and neighbor Dewey Collier III take pride in their Bickley Road properties.
This ain't supposed to be happening to us.
That they say have been threatened since last fall.
She's coming down through here like a bullet.
With every rain.
Effects of the disaster that Dominion has put in here.
They say a little more of their land.
As you can see, this is not even a creek anymore.
Gets washed away by Dominion Powers Belcher Solar Plant, which was developed on more than 1,000 acres behind them.
Each rain, you rip a little bit more of your soil.
When the skies clear up over the solar plant, you get an idea of just how far that water has traveled and the damage left behind. Roots are exposed on the tree and the earth is literally torn apart.
I think you get the picture of what I'm talking about.
Let's not give a speech, just testify to facts, please.
I'm getting to the facts.
No, you just said, I think you get the picture. That's a speech, that's an argument.
Okay. Strange. Anyway, that shows the effect of not calculating the correct time of concentration and volume of water leaving the property. That they take, and point of fact, that is exactly what's going on there is they're suing the county because they did not take those proper equations into effect, even though they were, had them in hand. So anyway, let me move on, since I'm obviously irritating somebody. So that's the issue.
You're not irritating me, doctor. I'm asking you to stick to facts. It's not anything more, more or less than that. This is not a soapbox for us to give your opinion. You can testify to facts, all you want, all you want.
I haven't given any opinions at all. I just showed you the facts. I talked about what's going on. I don't, whatever. Anyway, the last thing is decommissioning. I see by your ordinance, you have a decommissioning plan. I think that is critical to have that in, in place because of course there'll be a number of issues in returning this land to crop production. I've written a paper on that, that I can make available to you and I'll just save your time here tonight by not visiting about that. Certainly, when you talk about the number of solar facilities going and there'll be a large amount of residues that need to be accounted for. So these are all evidence. Here's a, there's a paper from a professor's talking about the growth in solar waste over the next 20 to 25 years and the need to have plans for, for containing that. So there's going to be that rapid expansion of solar farms here today. What can we do to encourage that solar works for all of us? And that's really the reason I'm here tonight was.
Well, that's on the soapbox. Let's stick to facts. I mean it. If you want to come back and give a speech at the end of all this, that's great, please. But you're under oath now. You're going to be subject to cross-examination. We stick to facts.
All I want to do is show you these facts. And so you can use them however you want to. So encourage good land use planning, plans for vegetation control, use independent experts to access land resources. All these need to be in place in making good decisions about this.
And any other facts, doctor?
I'm going to move to the end because obviously I've irritated you. So if, if this is life-changing, so there you go.
Sir, do you have any questions of them that'll bring out any more facts you want to bring out?
Yes, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Dr. Heineger, are you familiar with the rating of soils?
Yes.
Are you familiar with the rating of soils in relation to solar farms?
Yes.
Were the indexes that were generated, were they created for this use? For the use to determine if solar farms should be on land?
No, they really weren't. You have to have independent documents that North Carolina has developed, USDA has its farmland conversion impact rating that could be used. There's, there's many approaches that could be used, but the rating of land is primarily for agricultural determination of how agricultural usage should use the land, not for industrial facilities.
And have you seen variability in how the land was rated?
Yes, I have. Oftentimes, independent consultants are hired who have not seen the land or don't have any relationship to, to land, make ratings that are not applicable. Most of these ratings are, have a somewhat of a subjective classification to them. They're not, they don't have a calculable classification, basically what the, by eye of the beholder. So you have to be careful about who rates or values, evaluates land for different purposes. You need an independent, non-biased person who is familiar with community, familiar with the land and its uses.
In your experience with solar farms, do they change the aesthetics of the land?
Yes, that's incontrovertible.
Did you play the complete video that you were showing earlier?
No, I was trying to, to be conscious, help the board here as far as time. I did not show the complete video. They're welcome to, to look at it on their own time.
Do you have the ability right now to show the rest of the, of the video?
I could, I could.
Can you do that, please?
All right, sure.
If they want a solar field back there, that's their property and their business. But when you destroy surrounding land, then it becomes our business.
The property owners made it the business of the State Department of Environmental Quality when they say they weren't getting anywhere with the county.
They wouldn't come out.
CBS 6 has obtained records on the solar plant dating back to July of last year when stormwater runoff from Belcher flowed into Harris Creek. The DEQ later ordered Dominion to pay a fine of just over $50,000. Then last October, Dominion confirmed cleanup on the contamination was complete. But these neighbors say that's when their water woes were just beginning. They document the next six months and in April, this inspection report would detail signs of erosion from outfall basins behind Marks and Collier's properties. It also notes several other observations. The power company has provided responses to the county and state on updates regarding these basins and seven others on the solar property. The DEQ says it expects them to meet the necessary requirements, but can't confirm until the documents are received and reviewed.
We've, we've double-checked the engineering. It measures up. It is working according to plan. It's going to continue to work in the future, but we understand that there are, you know, issues to those neighbors which are directly adjacent to us. And so we're looking, working with them to go above and beyond, you know, the basic engineering requirements and, and address those. And we hope to find some, some resolution.
Some Louisa County Board of Supervisor members who visited the site after a CBS 6 inquiry and meeting with Dominion were critical of the project at their September 7th meeting.
It's pretty catastrophic. It's really, it's really bad.
We can't ever let them out of clear cut 1100 acres ever again.
The very people that approved this project also visited the site and they said that this was a terrible situation. They called it catastrophic. What is your response to that?
Well, I understand in a snapshot, people could have, you know, extreme opinions. But this, this project is, you know, has had its challenges and has made its mistakes. And we understand that and we've worked diligently to address those issues.
Dominion says it's aggressively trying to establish this permanent vegetation to minimize runoff, which they say is the result of extreme weather in the middle of construction.
The new stuff, it didn't amount to anything. The result is a disaster going on, still going on.
These property owners just want to see an end to this.
Yeah, property is getting washed out deeper and deeper.
And change moving forward.
To the county, I would say you need to start treating a lot of these projects like you live next to them because I guarantee you, if any one of those Board of Supervisors houses were or land backed up to this, this wouldn't be here.
Now Dominion has met with the homeowners on multiple occasions. We reached out to Louisa County, who provided us with the following statement that reads in part, "The board continues to advocate directly on behalf of impacted citizens and our ongoing efforts with Dominion represent an important tool in this regard." "The board has also formed a utility scale solar development committee, which has already recommended against the development of future solar projects, which do not demonstrate significant commitment to thoughtful development and enhanced protection of surrounding resources." You can see the full statement on our website, wtvr.com.
Dr. Heineger, do you have a slide in your presentation that references the effects of seal, of carbon dioxide with farming versus solar energy?
No, I don't.
Do you, okay, do you have a, do you have a slide in your presentation that references? Do you, okay. Do you have a, do you have a slide in your presentation that references the financial effects of uh, farming versus solar?
Right.
Could you reference that, please, and talk to that?
Yeah, let me, I'll bring that up here this second. Yeah, the last bullet point here, the, is comes from an economist here at North Carolina State University and talks about the fact that, that every dollar invested in a crop, in this case a corn crop, returns uh, three times as much to the local economy. So a corn crop in North Carolina costs $522 per acre on average and results in $1,566 in economic activity in the local community.
Thank you. I believe I have no further questions. Okay, questions to this witness, Ms. Kennedy?
Thank you, Judge. Mr. Heinecker, can you hear me all right?
Yes, I can.
Are you familiar with the applicant in this matter?
No, I'm not.
Have you reviewed any materials submitted by the applicant?
I, I have re, the materials that I have reviewed are the Lee County Board Ordinance Number 0721004 and the Standard Agricultural Impact Mitigation Agreement for the State of Illinois. Those are the two materials that I have reviewed.
So is it, is it, oh, let me back up. I'm sorry. Have you studied any type of solar farms here in Illinois?
No, not in Illinois. I have not. I have in, in Indiana, in Ohio, North Dakota, uh, Oklahoma, Michigan, but I don't remember any in Illinois.
Have you visited the site proposed for this project?
No, I have not. I didn't even know if this project existed until three days, three or four days ago.
Are you familiar with what's known as the Natural Resource Report issued by the Soil and Water Conservation District?
Yes, I am. I'm admitted with that.
And are you aware of soil and water's role in this process?
Yes, I am.
And what is their role?
Their role is to do a, a assessment of, of the very factors that we just have, some of which we just talked about, the time of concentration, the potential volume of runoff from the site, the potential impacts on erosion. And as I just reiterated, they're using factors that are outdated and, and not applicable to the type of industrial facility this is.
Have you had any communications with the Lee County Soil and Water Conservation District about this project?
No, I have not.
Have you checked with them to determine what factors or tools they use to issue their recommendations?
I have not. No, no, I had not had any time to do so.
But you're telling us that they use outdated factors. Is that correct?
Well, that, that they did in Louisa, every county. If, this is the same equations are universal. They come from a manual that is used by soil water conservation. They use across the United States.
And have you confirmed with the Lee County Soil and Water Conservation District that they utilize that manual?
No, I have, like I said, I have not had time to, to visit with them. Would be happy to.
What type of solar panels are used in your studies?
We're using cadmium telluride panels, thin, uh, thin panels that were left over from a project here in North Carolina.
Are you aware of what type of panels are proposed for this project?
I am not.
And have you ever worked with a solar farm to implement your practices or recommendations?
I have.
Okay. And, and what role do you play in that process?
Advis, advising them on how to better cont, uh, control water and, and develop retention and other soil and water conservation practices that mitigated uh, some of the issues we saw in that video.
And have you ever advised or worked with a solar farm here in Illinois to address those practices?
No, I have not.
And you referenced earlier the agricultural impact mitigation agreement. Is it safe to assume you're familiar with that document?
I have, I've read it over two or three times. Yeah. I guess that's familiar.
Sure. And so there's, is it safe to say there's certain requirements as to decommissioning, construction and various other topics?
Right.
And are you familiar with the Lee County Soil and Water Conservation District's role under that AMA agreement?
The, yes, well, at least I, I'm familiar with the linkage between the, the county ordinance and the, the agreement. The county ordinance makes reference to, to the AIMA uh, document on things like vegetation control and water, uh, erosion is, is referenced back to this AIMA document.
And, and under this AMA agreement, is the Soil and Water Conservation District allowed to be consulted with respect to to various solar projects in Illinois?
Right, yes, they are.
And Mr. Heinecker, can you pull up your slide? There, there was a slide you had about your, your recommendations or what, what practices need to be utilized?
Oh, okay. Let me see if I can find it. Uh, I think it's this last, nope. Come back here.
Yeah. That's it.
Here they are. Yeah, let me get my head out of the way. Yeah.
So in your opinion, it is very important to have a vegetation management plan or vegetation control plan. Is that fair?
Yes.
And are you aware that the applicant has submitted a vegetation management plan?
I, I am aware that they submitted a vegetation management plan. I think it needs to be more detailed than it currently is.
And did you review that?
I have not.
Did you review that plan?
But but under A, the AIMA.
Sir, please answer the question.
I am answering the question.
No, she asked you, did you review that vegetation management plan?
The answer is no.
And have you reviewed the decommissioning plan submitted by the applicant?
No.
The, the video that you played, is that a solar farm located in Virginia? Did I catch that right?
That's right.
And did you personally visit the solar site featured in that video?
Yes, I did.
Okay. And what can you tell me about any, any vegetation under the panels at the time that video was taken?
They had established, the time the video was taken, they had, had started establishing some of the vegetation under those panels. It had not taken off very good. They were having serious problems. This is in Piedmont of Virginia. Soils were compacted. They, they had a mess there.
So is it a fair statement that in the video, it doesn't look like they have very much vegetation planted under the panels?
Right. Yep. They just, just had planted and it's just struggling to come up.
Have you had a chance to review the pollinator mix that the applicant has proposed to plant for this project?
No.
Have you reviewed the site plan for this project?
No, I, I have not seen it. I, I think I've said several times I've only had two or three days here. So if you'll send it to me, I'd be happy to look at it.
I have nothing further, Judge.
Okay. Uh, how about you, Mr. Boonstra?
Questions, thank you.
Uh, Ms. Duffy? Ms. Henkel? Members of the ZPA, Mr. Burrow?
Yes, uh, Doctor. You were in North Carolina, I believe you said.
That's right.
Uh, does Duke Energy have any solar farms in North Carolina?
Yes, they manage some solar farms here in North Carolina.
Are they very large farms or do you know?
Yeah, the largest farm is the 1,300 acre solar facility up in Moyoc area of North Carolina.
You spell that for my court reporter.
M Y O C K.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm sorry, M O Y O C K. I'm, I left the O out.
And are you familiar with that facility to know what their vegetation and, and runoff situation is there?
Yes, I have visited that facility. They have had a number of similar complaints that we saw in Louisa County. Erosion and other problems, but not nearly as severe because they're the relief or the slope of that land is on the same order as the property in Louisa County.
Are you familiar with any steps they've taken to change what they're doing?
They have, they have graded some, uh, mitigation burns and, and structures to try to control some of the runoff.
Okay, that's all. Thank you, Doctor.
Um, how about you, Mr. Bothy?
No questions.
How about you, Mr. Hughes?
Yes, I have a few. Um, Doctor, would you go back to the slide that, um, where you were referencing the outdated information or the calculations and the amount of runoff that you were referencing?
Yes, let me see if I find that this second. I got myself in.
I believe, I believe that's it.
That's it, yeah.
Yes. And if I'm not mistaken, on the area right above your head, it talks about without ground cover, water infiltration is limited, runoff is more severe. And the picture that you show above that is also a solar farm without, with limited or no ground cover?
Right.
Okay.
You also have to take
Go ahead.
Uh, you also have to take into account that the panels, that's where the problem exists is it's these panels act as, they're not, they're covering the ground, but they're acting as, as reflectors for rainfall events. Like, like I said, a roof. So indeed, even though you have ground cover between them, while you've got partial area of this field that's actually a, a solid surface now.
And yet you're, you're referencing both in that picture and in your, and in your heading without ground cover.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
That ground, ground cover, that, a properly developed ground cover will help this immensely. But in most cases, the, the problem is the conflict between keeping the ground cover low and, and maintain and having this cover to mitigate water. Uh, you see a number of facilities use, use burned down herbicides that actually burn the ground cover down to the surface.
All right, let's, let's, let's get away from what other, why don't you ask a question?
Then I will, then I'll go back. Um, you opened up for another question. Then I'll go back to have you, um, read and evaluated the weed and grass control and landscape plan for this project?
No, I, I have not. And I would, I would love to do so. I, I, if, when I first was contacted that something that needed to be done, I, I have not had a chance.
Okay, then the next question I'll ask you, do eat, does either the um, solar farm in Virginia that you referenced or the one in North Carolina that you're familiar with, do those farms around that property, um, have extensive tiling, um, to address the water runoff and control?
No, neither the Virginia nor the large farm that we talked about at Moyoc have tiles, tile in, in that land.
Are you, are you aware of the impact of the tiling in the farms and the properties that we're referencing?
No, I, 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 I know of solar farms here in North Carolina that have been built on tile with tile drainage, but I do not know that the situation there in Lee County.
Okay, you also mentioned, um, the differences in the slopes between the Virginia and the North Carolina properties. Are you familiar with the slope of the property on, under this project?
No, and you're, that's a great question because it's critical. The slope factor is a critical factor in these calculations.
Okay, that's, thank you. I, that would be my assumption. Um, and then I guess you were insistent upon, um, you were insistent upon the need for independent calculations on the, um, water control or the runoff. Do you, do you have a position that the local county soil and water conservation district is not independent?
No, not at all. And I don't, I think maybe that's a misunderstanding of what I said. I wasn't talking about this. The calculations of the runoff, the problem there is the use of, uh, the wrong factors here. That's not their pro, that's embedded in the equations. It's something we need to to get these papers published and get soil water to adopt these new, new factors. Uh, what I was talking about as far as independent is making an assessment of the land, uh, appraisal of the land uh, uh, for use as agriculture, whether it's gray, uh, class A, class B, class C's, class D land. That, that's what I was talking about. Because I, I think your local soil and water conservation should do a great, that they would be my first people to turn to. If they had the right factors, they'd be, it would be a done deal. This would be easy.
Okay, then let's go to the production index and the classifications for A, B, and C soil. Are you, isn't that this local county soil and water conservation district that is dealing with that?
Uh, it could be. Uh, what we have seen in North Carolina is oftentimes those evaluations are done by independent companies who do not have a presence in the county and are actually phoning it in. They're, they're hired to make an appraisal without any, uh, connection to the site.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, interested parties in the room, questions of this witness? Yeah, mine, I'm, I'm sorry. Oh, Rex.
No questions.
Sorry, questions? Seriously, okay.
Sorry about that. Jennifer Lawson, uh, non-participating adjacent landowner to the current project. Dr. Heinecker, you had mentioned that there are adverse effects about improper usage of the herbicides killing the vegetation that's intended to protect the solar and the runoff.
Right.
But it's the same herbicides that are used to kill the broad leaves and the current crops. So they're, they're, they do not.
I'm, I'm not trying to be difficult, but there's a question in there somewhere, but.
There is.
Judge, I'm going to object to that. He doesn't have a foundation. He hasn't reviewed the plan.
I'm, I'm waiting for the question, so we'll, I'll.
Okay. So my question is, is there a long-term adverse effect on restoring the land to prime farmland from using the herbicides that are going to kill what needs to be killed?
Judge, I'm going to make the same objection. He doesn't have a foundation to speak about the herbicides used by the applicant.
And I mean, you can ask him. I mean, I'll help you get start, I'll, I'll, Dr. Heinecker, are you familiar with the herbicides that, um, the applicant, the petitioner in this case, has proposed to use to control the vegetation if the project is approved?
No, no, I, I'm not familiar. Like I said, I haven't reviewed their.
Is that just yes or no?
Are herbicides required? Okay, so are herbicides part of the AIMA requirements for the soil, soil? Okay, so are herbicides part of the I E M A requirements for the soil? They, they are not predicted there. That's just the soil and water conservation I E M A requirements are not part of the herbicides are not part of that. That's dependent on the owner of the project, correct?
I, I didn't, I'm not really understanding what you're asking. Could you ask that again?
Never mind, I was trying to get an answer. So, I was trying to work around that. So how long does it take to establish vegetation after construction?
It depends on when the construction finishes. If it's in springtime, usually they could establish decent vegetation by three to four months there during the summer, early spring, summer. If it's in the fall, then it's a longer period.
So there's potential for excessive runoff during that construction time?
Sure.
So whether it is Duke Energy or any other company, all of them need to meet or exceed I E M A requirements, whether it's Lee County Solar or not.
Right.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Other interested parties in the room with question?
Dr. Henninger, does a solar farm when built where agriculture land, rural crops are currently at, does that change the character and aesthetics of the land?
Yes.
Thank you.
Other folks in the room, questions of this witness? Okay, so just gentleman in the front first. I try and do what I see first. Jonathan Mix. M I X. Okay, is the solar site you reference in your slideshow, the Belcher Solar in Louisa?
No, the slide that's behind my head right now is a solar facility in Moore County, North Carolina.
Okay, and then the video that you presented?
That was the Belcher.
Let him finish his question. The, the video that you showed is not the same one that's in your slide?
No.
Okay. Um, this, the one that had all the runoff issues, do you know the type of soil composition it had?
It's a Cecil clay loam.
A clay?
Yes.
Okay, and are you familiar with the soil composition in this area?
In Lee County?
Yeah.
No, I haven't looked at soil map at Lee County.
Okay. And that runoff video you showed with the site Moore, do you know the owner or developer of that project site?
It's been a couple of years ago. I'd know, I could go back and find who that was. I don't remember it off the top of my head.
Okay, so you don't know if it was Duke Energy or not?
No, this, most of these developers in North Carolina are LLCs, and then they sell the rights to Duke Energy. That's how it's handled here.
Okay. And with your expertise, would more root in like a, we'll just say a square foot be better to lessen the runoff in ground land?
Would more what now?
More roots?
Yes, actually.
So more, okay, so then, so your typical how do I want to word this? Your typical farm crop has a shallow root? Would that be less? Just, hold on, let me, let me step back. Would grass make a better runoff resistant crop?
Yes, the best runoff resistant crop is actually trees, believe it or not. The second best is grass, and then, then you get into narrow crops and then low row crop. It depends on the vegetation, obviously.
Okay, no further questions. Thank you. Anybody else just on hand? Go ahead.
My name is Phil Mano. That's M A N N O. All right, Doctor, just a few questions. The video displayed, was that Lee County?
The what I displayed? Sorry, I didn't hear that.
The video that you displayed on the screen with all the runoff, is that Lee County?
No.
Have you visited the area where the solar farm is going?
In Lee County?
Yeah.
No.
Are you being paid from any landowners for your services tonight?
I'm not getting a penny from anybody tonight. This is all on my, on my own time. I'm getting beat up for my own sake.
Okay. Are all, are all grounds across America the same? If not the same, explain why some areas flood more than others?
No, all ground is not the same. And it's, it's somewhat complicated to go into why some floods more than others. It has to do with slope, slope being a key factor to why flooding occurs, but ground cover is important in the, in the calculation, the intensity of the rainfall events that occur. Trying to think of the other factors that are somewhat involved here. The length of the slope is, is critical. So those are just some of the, so every piece of land, even within a farm or a field, has different flooding or, or water characteristics that lend itself to more or less flooding or flood events. And of course, you've got soil compaction. There, there's a lot of factors that go into, to why flooding does occur.
All right. In your experience, how many farms, solar farms or farms were flooded or grounds ruined from a solar farm that was installed in an area?
In North Carolina, we've seen about thirty percent of the solar installations cause some flooding or continued water drainage problems onto adjacent, about thirty percent of the installations here.
So you have not, you have done no studies in Illinois at all?
No, I sure have not.
Last question. Are you here tonight for the real concern of a farmland across America or because you're being paid?
I'm here for the farmland across America. I, I've said I'm not getting a dime. If you want to check my bank records, you're happy to do it. I'm not getting a dime, and I'm here for the farmland across America. We need good farmland to sustain ourselves.
Judge, other?
We have Mr. Mano's location.
Oh, yeah, Mr. Mano, where, where do you live, work, or reside?
I work in the area.
In comparison to the boundary of the
That is my, I go through it every day.
I'm sorry, I just didn't
I travel from, from DeKalb to Rock Falls every day, and I take those roads. Thank you.
Any other? In the room, yes?
I'm Pete Hermes. I am an active participant. I'm pretty much right in the middle of Three Mile South of Dixon and twenty-sixth, right in the middle of it. I wanted to ask, Doctor, first of all, the land proposed is relatively flat. There's not a lot of severe slopes or anything. So from what I gather with you, if the vegetation and grass was planted, I would think there'd even be less runoff than a, than a normal chisel plowed cornfield, especially when that grass and vegetation gets established.
If that's a question, it's a long
That's a question. Is that, is that true? Would there be, would there be less runoff?
Yes, yes, your, your premise that you put forward here is true. If it's freshly trizzled ground, will have more runoff than solar panels with grass under it. That, the time of concentration will be shorter with a chiseled deal.
Okay, okay, the, the only other quick thing, somebody said something about aesthetics. Duke's been very good about
Now you're telling us something, just ask him a question. He's under oath.
Have you, have you seen a lot of where they put bushes in front of the solar panel if requested by the farmer to block the view of the house?
Yes, I have seen a lot of them.
Yes.
They, that's required in most of them here in North Carolina.
Very good. They offered us the same. Thank you.
All right, folks in the room? Any other question? Yep, yes, sir. Why don't you give us your name and where you live, work, or reside in relation to this project?
I'm Marvin Gertes. And I'm part of the project. Doctor, I haven't heard, I think. This project, I understand, has considerable space between the panels. Is that the case of most times? Or are some of the panels much closer together?
It depends on the design of the facility. If they're rotating panels, they tend to be closer together. If they're fixed, then they have to have more space between the rows of panels. That's what we have here in North Carolina.
So more space between panels would cut down on the runoff considerably if the ground was in vegetation with loose soil?
Yes, that's right. It would give you more area to, to water.
Okay, anybody else in the room? See none. Folks on Zoom, if you don't remember how, if you got a question for this witness, if you'll go down at the bottom of the screen, I think there's a tab that says participant. Click on that tab, and there should be a list among that list should be another, I'll call it a tab, a function that says raise hand. So if you've got a question and you're on video conferencing, would you go ahead and do that now? If you're teleconferencing, meaning you're not on your computer, you're just on your cell phone, if, and just listening, if you'd go, if you'd stay on, but, but go to your keypad and touch star or asterisk, and then the number nine. Okay, Mr. Nichols, can you hear me? Mr. Nichols, can you hear me? You might be on mute. What?
No, I'm unmuted.
There, okay, very good. You have a question, this witness?
Yeah, I am. So my name is Dr. Peter Nichols, and I'm in the project. I'm a landowner. And the first question is, did I get it correct that thirty percent of the North Carolina solar facilities had experienced flooding?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
And how many of those thirty percent had experienced flooding prior to the placement of the solar panels?
Well, this, none of them. That, what I was referring to was that thirty percent had, had issues with surrounding properties that had excessive water multiple times during the year.
Did you study the experience with excess water and adjacent properties prior to the solar farm being placed?
Right, yeah, we measured, we've measured this on the number of properties where we measured how much runoff that's been accumulating on adjacent properties. And we can verify that this water is coming from these facilities.
No, I, I didn't, don't think he asked, answered my question. So my question was, you, these thirty percent of facilities had experienced excess wat, or adjacent land experienced excess water that you attribute to the placement of the panels?
Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so then my question is, did you study that same watershed prior to the placement of panels to see if, given similar circumstances, that is, the rainstorms that caused the excess flooding? Did, were there similar events that occurred prior to the placement of panels? And if there were similar events, did, what?
Doctor, that's the longest question. You're gonna have to break. You're gonna have, I don't know, I don't know about the witness, but it would be very difficult for most people to answer.
Let me, let me start back. Let me, so, so thirty percent had excess flooding? What I'm asking is, did you study what flooding was like prior to the placement of panels on that thirty percent?
No, I'm just gonna say no.
So you don't know, okay, so you said no. So you don't know what the experience with flooding prior to the placement of panels was?
The only thing I have prior to placement was the the stories or anecdotal evidence of the landowners prior to placement of these facilities.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? From, from you, Doctor? Okay, all right, any other hands raised that you can see, Zach? You're gonna have to help me because I can't criminate that for, okay, great. All right, thank you, you may, you're excused, Dr. Henninger. And we're gonna take a break for about twelve minutes, twenty after. Alrighty, ladies and gentlemen, okey dokey. The Grinch is stopping the social hour. All right. Next, I'm still on interested parties wishing to testify here in old Lee County Courthouse. So by raise your hand if you wish to testify. Okay, seeing no hands raised. Folks on Zoom wanting to testify. I remind you again, if you want to go to participant and then click on that tab and then click raise hand, we'll know you want to testify. If you're just on your cellphone and listening, asterisk, stand, stand the cellphone, go to your keypad, punch up asterisk or star and then the number nine. Nobody. A few more seconds. Anybody? All right, well, that should then conclude the presentation of evidence. Ms. Kennedy, would you be prepared to give closing argument tonight?
I am, Judge.
Okay. Before we get that far, housekeeping stuff. I want to work on some available dates. Obviously, mostly for for fact finding, but we'll have, we'll have some public comments, I'm sure. The next one I have is November 3rd. And I want to check with Mr. Meyer, Mr. Bothy, and Mr. Burrow. Are you all still available that day? Okay. Anybody else that I've gone through previously with this that all of a sudden, since, since we went through it, has a problem with that day, Wednesday, November 3rd? All right. I'm putting one back in play, and that is Monday, November 8th. As to that day, Mr. Burrow?
Yes.
Mr. Bothy?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Ms. Duffy, any problem with that day? Ms. Henkel? Mr. Boonstra? Ms. Kennedy?
That date works for me, Judge.
Oh, Kelly? Zach, any problem? And the next day I have after that is Tuesday, the 9th, but I don't want to do two in a row. Actually, I think I'll just leave it at that. And we'll see how far we get. So, so, so the next two available dates are November 3rd and November 8th. And we'll see after that. Okay, yes. 6 o'clock, but, but I haven't, those are available days. Remind me to announce one before we leave. For sure, the next day. All right, Ms. Kennedy, you may.
Thank you, Judge. First and foremost, I'd like to take an opportunity to thank the Zoning Board of Appeals, Judge Slaven, the various county representatives here tonight, the IT Department, and all interested parties that have been involved throughout this hearing process. Night meetings can be long and tedious at times, and I appreciate all of your time and attention to this matter. I'd next like to address the Zoning Board of Appeals' role throughout this hearing process. As we know, it's a quasi judicial function, meaning that it's a public hearing where the applicant is required and interested parties may present evidence and testimony in support of their respective positions. You, the ZBA, serves as the finder of fact. After considering all evidence and testimony presented, then analyzing the ordinance requirements, you will issue certain findings based upon your analyses, and ultimately, you will make a recommendation to the county board. Respectfully, your job is not to determine whether Lee County should or shouldn't have a solar energy ordinance in place. I believe that's already been answered. And in fact, one could say that it's been answered twice, first with the original ordinance and second with the new ordinance. Again, your job is to look at the evidence presented, analyze the applicant's submissions and all other evidence presented with the original ordinance, issue your findings of fact based upon the same, and make a recommendation. It doesn't matter that the PowerPoint presentations didn't change much, or that the applicant presented a lot of the same witnesses from the first permitting attempt. Your role is to focus on the original ordinance for solar energy systems. And to that end, I'd like to address, under both ordinances, what the purpose of each ordinance on solar energy systems is. It is to facilitate the construction, installation, and operation of solar energy systems within the county that promote economic development and ensure the protection of the public health, safety, and welfare while also avoiding adverse impacts to important areas such as agricultural lands, endangered species habitat, conservation lands, and other sensitive lands. So let's unpack that and what that really means. This means that Lee County, the Lee County Board, has deemed that solar energy systems are a permissible use in agricultural districts within the county. And I know you've heard through direct, or through cross-examination, actually. I believe Mr. Lawson read the county's general definition of what is considered to be agriculture or agricultural use under Chapter 1 of Title 10, just in the general definitions. What Mr. Lawson failed to note, however, is under Chapter 9 of Title 10, the Use in Bulk Regulations, specifically 10-9-1 of the ordinance, allows solar energy systems to be situated in Ag 1 districts as a special use. Again, in short, solar energy systems has been determined by the county board to be a permissible ag use under both ordinances. I'd also like to take a minute to address issues that have been raised during this hearing process relating to the county's comprehensive plan. And first, I want to look to the actual language of the plan itself, which reads, "The plan serves as a blueprint for growth and development in the county. It is designed to aid government officials, developers, landowners, and the general public when making decisions regarding growth in Lee County. The primary goal of the plan is to maintain the agricultural economy in the county by limiting non-agricultural development on prime farmland and to preserve and enhance the rural character and farming lifestyle of the county." I think it's imperative that everybody understand what the comprehensive plan is. It is a goal. It is a goal that the county has, and it's exactly what its name, it is a plan. And I think we also must understand that plans are fluid and plans change. Now, I would be remiss if I didn't address the timing aspects of the creation and adoption of both ordinances on solar energy systems and the red herring that's been presented by some interested parties. You've heard some testimony and comments made about the county's comprehensive plan and whether or not this project fits that comprehensive plan. And it appears that some interested parties are attempting to use that comprehensive plan as a way to oppose the project. What the county must keep in mind, however, is the timing of the ordinances in connection with the county's comprehensive plan. The plan was initially adopted in 2009 and 2010. Sometime after the plan was adopted, in 2017, the county created the original ordinance, or what I refer to as the original ordinance throughout this hearing process. That would be the ordinance regulating solar energy systems. And as you all are likely aware, recently in 2020, passed in July of 2021, the county overhauled the original ordinance to create the new ordinance provisions. It's also important to note that the new ordinance was created to address and regulate utility scale solar projects. That's why we've seen longer setbacks, more stringent provisions. Both ordinances, both the original and the new ordinance, were passed after the comprehensive plan was adopted and formed. While the comprehensive plan is a goal of the county, the ordinances are binding standards and regulations. Therefore, by virtue of having an existing ordinance regulating solar energy systems in place, the county has chosen to allow the siting of solar farms within the county's agricultural zones. As I've noted, do not let that distract or mislead you during this process. Much of the cross-examination throughout this hearing process has surrounded the new ordinance terms and whether Lee County should allow solar energy systems in general. Again, your job, respectfully, is to, is to determine whether the solar project, as proposed, meets the requirements of the original ordinance and the requirements generally for the issuance of a special use permit in Lee County. So turning to those requirements, under Title 10, Chapter 2, it provides in relevant part, "At such hearing for special use..." "At such hearing for special uses, the ZBA shall hear evidence relating to the effect of the proposed special use on the character of the neighborhood, effect upon surrounding properties, traffic conditions, public utility facilities, environmental concerns, compliance with rules, regulations, and standards set forth in this title, and other matters pertaining to the public health, safety, or general welfare." These are the seven factors under Lee County's general ordinance that shall be considered, and I'd like to address each one and note the evidence and testimony provided. The first one, the effect of such proposed special use upon the character of the neighborhood. Again, as I've mentioned, this solar project fits in with the agricultural use of the property, herbal, per the original ordinance and the new ordinance. You heard testimony from Jennifer Klingshern and Patrick Smith, who testified that the project will take land out of row crop production, but will not take it out of agricultural production. They both each testified to the many benefits of the solar farm for ag families. Ms. Klingshern specifically mentioned that this is a temporary use. It will be removed and decommissioned. You've also heard about the longer setbacks and the vegetative screening and buffer that's going to be provided for adjacent neighbors. You heard from Mr. Tom Huddleston on drainage, who opined that drainage will be commissioned so as to leave the soil in better condition than at the time the project was constructed. Mr. Huddleston also noted that it will not take the ground out of an agricultural use. Turning to the second factor, the effect on surrounding properties. You've heard testimony that the project will not generate loud noise or vibrations. You can reference the noise study that was conducted by the applicant that shows that the noise levels meet the IPCB standards and both ordinance standards. There will be no odor, no shadow flicker, no hazardous materials to affect neighboring properties. With respect to electromagnetic radiation, Mr. Smith testified that any such electromagnetic radiation is emitted at safe levels even inside the project. There are no unsafe emissions outside of the project's property line. Mr. Smith also addressed fire and explosion issues and mentioned that the project will be monitored 24 hours a day, seven days a week. He also further testified to the fire protection plan and the applicant's commitment to working with Dixon Rural Fire Department during the construction and general maintenance of the project. You were provided a glare report that shows no glare on nearby structures, roadways, or other areas accessible to the public. Mr. Cooper further opined that the project will present no physical hazards to the local airport, no potential impact on runways or aircraft nearby. Mr. Mike Marus testified that there will be no negative impact to surrounding land values. You've heard from Mr. Huddleston that there will be a better drainage system for both participating and adjacent non-participating landowners. You've heard from Mr. Neves about the steady source of income for participating landowners, the property taxes that will be generated by the project, and other ancillary benefits that will result to the local economy, the various restaurants, businesses, and hotels that will benefit especially during the construction period. As a couple witnesses testified, the project will cause no increase and may actually cause a decrease in stormwater runoff and flooding because of the vegetation that will be planted under the panels. At the end of the project life, the facility will be removed and the land will be restored back to its condition before the solar farm. In fact, Mr. Huddleston testified that the land will be restored in such a way that the continued farming of the soil will not be affected or impacted. With respect to the third factor, traffic conditions, you heard testimony from Mr. Smith that traffic is expected to increase during construction of the project. However, this is temporary. In fact, less traffic is expected to begin once construction is complete and the project is online. With respect to the fourth factor, public utility facilities, Ms. Klingshern and Patrick Smith testified that no new infrastructure will be required. Therefore, no public utilities will be utilized. With regard to the fifth factor, environmental concerns, you heard from Ms. Klingshern about what's called the EcoCat system utilized by Ms. Klingshern. And as she testified and as indicated in the application materials, the Department of Natural Resources stated in correspondence that there is no expected impact on state endangered species. And as a result, the case is closed, and the consultation requirement that's included in state statute is considered terminated by IDNR. The project submitted the results of a wetland study conducted at the request of the applicant. Again, Ms. Klingshern testified that wetlands will be avoided through the construction of the project. Ms. Klingshern further testified about the consultation with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. She further testified that the project would be designed such that no federally listed species would be affected and that there will be no detrimental impact to wildlife and their habitat in general. She testified that pollinated plants will be planted that will improve habitat for butterfly, bees, and other species. In terms of cultural studies, as Ms. Klingshern testified, there's a preliminary study that's been conducted. It is anticipated that additional studies will be required should there be a specific state action or federal trigger. In any event, Ms. Klingshern further testified that the project will adhere to federal and state laws concerning historic or archaeological sites. With respect to the sixth factor, compliance with the rules, regulations, and standards set forth in this title, you've heard testimony from Mr. Smith about the applicant's intent to comply with state and federal standards as well as industry standards. You've been presented in the application materials and executed AMA agreement between the applicant and the Illinois Department of Agriculture. You further heard from each of the witnesses presented by the applicant that the project meets and exceeds the requirements set forth in the original ordinance and, with the exception of two minor areas, meets the requirements of the new ordinance. You specifically heard through Mr. Smith's testimony, who went through each section of the new ordinance to testify as to how the project will comply with those requirements. I'd first like to recap the items of the new ordinance that the applicant does not meet, because I think that you would agree that while the applicant has exceeded the requirements of the original ordinance and meets nearly all of the requirements of the new ordinance, we're actually not that far apart with respect to those two differences. The first area is the consulting fund provision of the new ordinance. The new ordinance provides in relevant part that not less than 30 days after zoning has been granted, an initial engineering and legal fee of not less than $100,000 shall be deposited in the county treasury, the consulting fund, to cover all engineering, consulting, and legal fees incurred by the county for the duration of the project from conception to completion. The amount of the initial engineering and legal fee may be adjusted at the discretion of the county engineer based upon the size of the proposed project. Additional funds shall be required as deemed necessary by the county engineer. Monies remaining in the consulting fund at the completion of the project will be refunded back to the SES project. Here, it's important to note that the original ordinance does not include any requirement that the applicant provide a consulting fund or even that the applicant commit to reimbursing the county for certain fees and expenses. The applicant presented, Mr. Neves, the developer of this project, who testified that the applicant was willing to promptly pay any amounts required of it and to reimburse the county for any expenses and fees incurred by the county in connection with this project. He further testified that the applicant was willing to consider this option if more guidance was provided from the county as the language in the new ordinance provision is ambiguous as to when the S-Growth funds would be returned. The second area is the decommissioning plan. And again, it's important to understand the distinction between the new ordinance requirements and the original ordinance requirements. The original ordinance reads that decommissioning security financing shall be recovered to cover the projected cost of decommissioning in order to assure proper decommissioning of the site, and in no instance shall the financial security be less than $1,000 per acre. The new ordinance requires a financial assurance of 150% of the estimated cost of decommissioning without salvage value. Mr. Neves and Mr. Smith testified that the project meets the requirements set forth in the original ordinance and further testified that the applicant is willing to adhere to all other requirements of the new ordinance on decommissioning. However, the applicant is willing to pay 100% of the estimated cost of decommissioning without offsetting any salvage value consistent with the AMA agreement. Jumping back to the original ordinance requirements, you've heard testimony from Mr. Smith on the design aspects of the project and how it meets the original ordinance requirements and in many cases exceeds those requirements. You further heard from him about the applicant's commitment to being a good neighbor and its commitment to be bound to nearly all of the new ordinance requirements. With respect to the seventh factor, other matters pertaining to the public health, safety, or general welfare. I've already covered the glint and glare analysis that's been provided with the application materials, the noise study that's included in the application materials, and the testimony thereon. You heard that land values will not be negatively impacted as opined by Mr. Mike Marus. Mr. Marus and his study relied on different types of data. He looked at actual sales, and if you recall, he went through a few examples of what he called a matched pair analysis. Mr. Marus testified that he spoke to tax assessors in Illinois that have solar projects in their counties and that none of them have observed any value, any decrease in value of the assessments on property located near solar projects. Finally, Mr. Marus testified, and his report includes a discussion about other peer-reviewed studies about solar projects which show no impact on property values for neighboring properties. To this end, I believe there's been more than ample testimony from the applicant toward each of those seven factors that must be considered in Lee County. It is my hope that you will ultimately recommend this project to the Lee County Board. Thank you.
Thank you. Any closing argument you want to give, Mr. Boonstra? How about you, Ms. Duffy? Ms. Henkel? Interested parties in the room? By raise of your hand, yep, I saw yours first, Ms. Lawson. We can see you so we know who we are, but somebody reading it won't, so.
Jennifer Lawson, adjacent landowner. First, I just want to make the statement that I am not against renewable energy or solar projects. I am an environmental engineer myself. I want to say that I am actually, I want to applaud the ZBA and the Lee County Board members for moving forward with renewable and green energy projects. However, secondly, myself and well as several others are against the South Dixon Solar Duke Energy 3,838-acre 500-megawatt project. I want to quote Henry Ford by saying that a business that makes nothing but money is poor business. So with Duke Energy in this project, this is actually a poor business because the only pros for this project are the money, is the money, and that it's renewable energies. I think the cons outweigh the pros for this project greatly. So a series of the not inclusive examples of the cons for this project are, how can 40-year, how can 40-years' use of prime farmland be considered temporary? To me, at 48-years-old, that is a life sentence, and it goes into two of my generations, my children. Wildlife may travel the water tributaries, but they could become trapped by the fences that are on part of this SES on either side of the road, on several parts of this land. The noise level, the 79 decibels for the inverters, which is above the allowable amount, not taken as a whole, was not considered. We're not discussed more in detail. One of the purposes of the Lee County Comprehensive Plan is to preserve agriculture and natural resources. Dixon, the city of Dixon, will be landlocked by this project. Typically, land is let to rest for one to five years, not 40. Only industrial facilities require permits such as stormwater pollution prevention plans and spill prevention and countermeasure control plans, not agriculture. And many non-participating landowners are against this project. Besides these adverse project aspects, there are still many unknowns in regards to this project, such as the accounting for the transmission line use. It cannot be overloaded 100% because of the biorenuclear plant. It does have adverse effects on it. No one has discussed the water, well, we discussed that today, nevermind. Sorry about that. No one has discussed the excess noise and vibration that will be, that will become during construction when they're installing the pylons for these units. No one has discussed the noise during the decommissioning. No one has discussed the certain facilities recycling solar panels that there, at this time, there are only certain facilities that actually recycle the solar panels, and they have to use highly hazardous materials to do so. No one has brought up that the fences will still be on the property lines. Well, the buffers will only be the ones that are on the setbacks. No one has brought up that how is Lee County tourism supposed to promote a 3,800-plus-acre solar farm? And no one has actually brought up, is this actually needed with the two solar farms that are currently going to be installed that are already over 6,000 acres? And finally, nobody has asked about the mental well-villing being of the non-participating landowners taken into account. We've talked about the facts. We've talked about the statutes. We talked about the permits, but nobody's talked about our well-being and the future of the land for us. So I'm going to end with a short story. This week where I work is what we call Spirit Week. It's called Walloween. Today's theme was pink for cancer awareness. I wore a pink wig, pink and white leggings, and a real Bears fan wore a pink shirt. I really thought about actually wearing that to this meeting to show that I am passionate because I believe for cancer awareness. However, in that I was not ashamed to hide that. But then I decided I want you to hear and to listen to what I had to say and not be distracted by my passion for cancer awareness. And I hope that from this set of verbiage that I talk now, the verbiage that I had from the Lee County Board meeting from the first time around, that you will see that I am passionately against this project. Thank you.
You. Folks in the room? I saw Mrs. Johansson, Angela first.
Martha Johansson. With an average crop production index between 133, 137, or even higher in some years, this is among the best farmland in Lee County in the state of Illinois. Using these 3,838 acres to support between 1,700,000 and 2,300,000 solar panels is a poor substitute for the productivity of this land. Not only do these acres produce American food for people and animals, but they are the source of many products that we assume will always be available when we go shopping. I am totally against the solar industry being given permission to build a 500-megawatt facility on very productive agricultural lands. Lee County has already given permission to construct solar systems on nearly 7,000 acres of prime farmland. We don't need another 3,800 acres of solar panels. I was not happy with one presenter from whom I received the impression that Lee County could surely afford a mere 3,800 acres of land to be used for a solar system. The comprehensive plan for Lee County states that the agricultural economy should be maintained by limiting non-agricultural development on prime farmland, and calling it a solar farm does not make it agricultural. The plan also presumes to keep the rural character of a farming lifestyle and preserve the aesthetic quality of the county. Would tourism be increased with acres of solar panels on the south side of Dixon? I suspect the strongest local support for a South Dixon solar system came from 25 participating landowners who are receiving $1,000 per acre, per year lease money. I also suspect that some of these landowners do not live here. Thus, the money will not be spent locally. Would some of these landowners use their money to outbid other farmers within the county on being able to rent land at a higher price? Or perhaps they would might be able to buy more farmland, too? Only the 25 landowners are receiving this substantial money, not the other citizens of the county. Not the other citizens of the county. One does realize that the owners of this proposed site do not pay property taxes on the leased land. Thus, the proposed amount of fifty million dollars over thirty five to forty years. That would be received by the taxing bodies is not all extra money. Beyond what the bodies are now receiving. Will Duke Energy be asking for tax abatements? Will Duke Energy be asking for lower assessed values as the during the forty to eighty year period? Yes, the four hundred fifty jobs will be an economical boost for the years of construction. Though there will not be four hundred fifty workers at all times. The five to ten permanent employees of Duke Energy are not required to live in the Dixon area. And could even be sent to other Duke locations in the state and possibly be counted as a permanent employee at other sites. The comparisons of Mr. Marus. Were for smaller solar systems, not a five hundred megawatt system. I feel that he did not take into account the changes in the housing market for the different sale dates of his comparisons. He did not present any data about the housing market near five hundred megawatt systems. As none exist. Even he admitted that norms for solar system setbacks are increasing. Can norms also change in other areas for solar systems such as building in industrial zoned land? There is no information on soil productivity after decommissioning as no decommission has occurred in the United States. This is all theory that the soil will be as productive afterwards as it is now after the during the the decommission of. implements running all over the land and compacting it again. Most of us will not be alive after thirty, forty, seventy or eighty years to see the results of decommissioning. But our great grandchildren could well ponder our actions on using the limited amount of prime farmland. For solar systems of twenty to thirty percent efficiency. Could Duke Energy be required to buy American made soda solar panels? How much of their wiring, electronics, steel posts are American made? I would urge the zoning board to deny this request for a special permit. The Comprehensive Plan goals of limiting non agricultural development on prime farmland should be considered. As well as preserving the rural character of the county. The aesthetic quality would definitely not be preserved by looking at acres and acres of solar panels.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room? Sir?
Jim Turtle.
All right, let's. Keep it down a little bit. Other people are trying to talk. Thank you.
So you've heard testimony from Duke's paid witnesses over the last several sessions outlining how this project will be good for our community, good for our farmland. In reality, it's good for Duke Energy and a few mostly absentee or retired landowners. You've heard their own witnesses testify that this is prime farmland. You've heard their witnesses testify that the aesthetics of land will change. The witnesses have testified that home values will not decrease. Seriously? How many of you want to buy a home that overlooks thirty eight hundred acres of solar? We live where we do to have open spaces, watch a growing crops every year, not to look at an industrial solar plant. You've also heard from Dr. Heinegger tonight, an independent, non paid concerned citizen of risks and concerns need serious consideration. You heard several questions about Dr. Heinegger reviewing this plan. It's not his job, right? He's just concerned about what happens to agriculture, what happens to farmland, what happens to communities. He he referenced the concern regarding runoff. I personally have concern regarding runoff. The waterway that runs through my farm today has thirty two hundred acres of of land that that flows into it. If we increase that water flow by double, I have serious concerns about the runoff. I don't believe there have been any long term studies on runoff. We tried to show some cases tonight where it has been an issue. I believe it needs further evaluation. My opinion is really a simple question, simple equation. Typically, if you live by the proposed site, you're against it. If you're Duke Energy standing to make money from it or one of the few landowners that will profit from it, you're for it. Again, most of the landowners do not live by the proposed site and in fact would be against it if it were by their homes. I find it interesting that the rules change based on agendas of certain individuals and which side of the equation they're on. As a county, we'd limited urban growth by the lease score, yet when a few profit from the development of the project, suddenly the lease score is not important. Regardless of anyone's opinion, this is mainly productive farmland. Farming was not meant to be a competition, rather a way of life. In our area, it has become a competition and a competition for land. If you vote yes, you will be voting to remove roughly thirty eight hundred acres from productive farmland. These few landowners will use this money to drive up the competition for land and a few will become bigger. It's not good for the local farming community. I find it interesting also that this is a zoning board of appeals. Duke testifies that you have a duty to vote yes if it meets the requirements of of the ordinance. And they they reference that. All of their facts support the ordinance, yet they bring up cases. They're not in the ordinance, tax revenue is not in the ordinance. All they're trying to do is convince us that it's good for our community. Again, it's good for Duke Energy. Obviously, they wouldn't be here. They wouldn't be spending all this money. They stand to make a lot of money on it and it's good for a few mostly absentee landowners. You as a zoning board have a burden. It's important on is how you, what is important is how you vote on this project. It will affect our neighborhood and many lives for a long time. Although Duke experts will tell you that forty to eighty years is temporary is basically a lifetime. The majority of us won't be here to see the decommissioning of this project if it's voted in. This is not the type of business we want to attract. If voted in, the ability to attract other businesses to South Dixon will be limited. I'm sure you all got tired of listening to Jamie Badger, the witnesses, but his points are well taken. It affects the aesthetics. It affects our neighborhood. It affects the prime farmland that you would be taking out of production for this. I urge you to vote no on this project.
Good, thank you. Mr. Lawson.
Jamie Lawson, adjacent landowner. I once read that the true test of a man's character is what he does when no one is watching. So during two thousand twenty, while in the middle of the worst pandemic in history with approximately three hundred eighty five thousand people dead. Some of whom were from Lee County and a nation on lockdown, Duke Energy Renewables felt it was appropriate time to submit a petition for a project. That if built would net them huge financial gains. They eventually found out that people were watching and the project was voted down. Now they are back with petition number two. For South Dixon Solar LLC. What has changed, you might ask? Well, besides five years being added to the project. And the fences are now eight foot instead of six, not much. The expert witnesses haven't changed, not even the ones that lied under oath and. On the first petition, the presentations haven't changed either, except for some very minor additions or deletions. The footprint of the project has not changed, even the land hasn't changed. However, they would like us to think that the weighted average productive productivity index of one thirty seven. Which falls under Class A soils has changed since the first petition. In the spirit of Duke Energy Renewables trying to be a better neighbor. Than last time, they have refused to give the county any guarantees that they will not sell or walk away from the project like they did. With Lee County Generating Station before the forty years are up. Duke Energy Renewables did however state they could provide an aerial computer generated photo of the project as a whole. Rather than a than a ground view of just a few panels. But in trying to be a better neighbor, they never provided that photo. One last item under the good neighbor theme is that Duke Energy Renewables has offered non participating landowners. Two thousand dollars a year, but only if they don't oppose the project. Even the mayor is involved in these pay to play tactics. Didn't he learn anything from Rita? Duke Energy did at least guarantee one thing, and that is if the project is built, there will be no room for future development within. The thirty eight hundred and thirty eight acre footprint immediately south of I eighty corridor for the next forty years. Which now the mayor of Dixon is fine with because Duke Energy Renewables. At all has offered him easily fifteen thousand dollars a year to the city of Dixon if they support the project. There has been one significant change regarding the project according to testimony given by Lee County Zoning Board Administrator D Duffy. The letters of support for this project have dropped by eighty four percent. Please consider the following facts when deciding for or against this project and not just. The testimony of witnesses that were paid by Duke Energy Renewables, some of whom have a history of lying under oath. The character and aesthetics of the land will change so drastically that an eight foot fence will be required around the whole project for safety. And the vegetation screening. Is required to block the view of the non participating landowners. Contrary to what the mayor has stated, the four hundred plus jobs. Are at peak and not for the entire two year project. Furthermore, if Duke Energy Renewables has agreed. To hire local workers as the mayor stated, the majority of local workers will choose to be. With their families and sleep in their own beds at night rather than paying for a hotel room. Local workers sleeping in their own beds at night will not have a huge impact on getting the up to two hotels launched. Thus contradicting what the mayor has stated. As far as huge impact to local restaurants. Construction workers only have a half hour lunch. And would not be able to get from the work site to the yard, get in their car, drive into town. Waiting in massive lines that form over the lunch period, get their food, drive back to the yard and get back to the work site within the half hour allotted. Thus requiring them to bring a lunch from home. People who bring their lunch from home do not have a huge, do not have a huge impact on local restaurants. This also contradicts what the mayor has stated. Please vote as if the future growth of Lee County or the city of Dixon will. Please vote as if no future growth for Lee County or the city of Dixon will take place. For the next forty years within the thirty eight hundred and thirty eight acre footprint. Of this project immediately south of the I eighty corridor because if built, there won't be. Thank you for your time.
Give us your name and where you either live, work or. Own a business.
Sure, Leandro Ariano Jr. My residence is in the city of Dixon within a couple of miles of the project area. I do own and operate businesses in Dixon. I'm also the mayor of the city of Dixon. I do note for the record, I am here in my official capacity. And the city of Dixon's corporate limits are contiguous with the borders of this project. I'll also note for the record that I am here with the unanimous blessing of the city of Dixon Council. First, I think it's important to note that the city has had multiple conversations. With Duke Energy both during the original project application, in the aftermath of Lee County denying that initial permit. And then again during this newest process. Included in some of those meetings were the city manager, the city attorney, the head of the Lee County Industrial Development Association. Various other. Members of the city staff as necessary and myself. Some of those were in person, some of those were via teleconference. The city of Dixon was officially neutral during their original application for a number of reasons. We had some concerns. We also felt there were a lot of good parts of the project that were addressed. Some of the things that we felt were addressed were watershed issues. Some of this area drains into Dixon's Fargo Creek, something we've had studies done on and we felt those are have mainly been addressed. You know, certainly things like gillair issues, how it might impact the airport, the highways. Some of our biggest concerns, other than the fact that the city of Dixon will not be getting any property taxes, we are not one of the governments, since we are contiguous but not in the project area. We would be generating no revenue and one of the chief revenue streams that's been noted is from property taxes. So certainly that was a concern, but we understand many of our sister governments in the region would be getting additional more and that was one of the reasons that was a positive that kept us neutral. But we did have concerns about our corporate authority, our corporate limits being blocked to the south. This is contiguous with our industrial park. Our industrial park is fairly full, not one hundred percent, but fairly full at this time. For those reasons and because some of our conversations weren't fruitful on how we would remedy that, we chose to remain neutral. We felt there were a lot of positives to the project and certainly that's the county's decision. We felt like there were some concerns that were less addressed. So what has changed for the better this time around? First of all, the project is substantially but not quite completely meeting the requirements of the updated city county solar ordinance. We felt this was important. Certainly as some of our fellow property owners in the region were upset as we've heard about that, we felt. The company did a better job of reaching out to anyone who was impacted, did a better job giving notice and certainly did a better job, we felt. In their discussions with us and how it was impacting the municipality. We also note that in the intervening time, the city has had the opportunity to take a look at the economic impact. So one of our chief concerns in the first go round was what was the economic impact? The city of Dixon has designed a lot of business around agricultural, so that's agricultural investments bank that specialize in agricultural loans. Agricultural financial planning implements and sales, whether that's tractor supply. Or even Walmart, certainly. Farm equipment, even though that's not a big sales tax generator, it's a jobs producer. And as the company or as I should say, as the county shifted to more energy production, certainly something Lee County has already had, but not at this acreage. There was some hesitation on the city's part in terms of how we would build that into our municipal plan. How can we build off that and synergize that? And in the first go round, we didn't felt, we didn't feel we had a very good answer to that. And certainly the long term jobs is still something that's being talked about. But with the success of Dixon's I eighty eight gateway project. As was mentioned by the speaker preceding me, we do have at least one announced hotel, which is aware of this potential project. We have a second one that's unannounced. But very keen on the area, which is also aware of this project. We have multiple developers who will be putting new businesses out there. And it's important to note that the first year or two of many of these businesses is a critical year. So the idea that these hundreds and hundreds of jobs might be there is certainly. An economic incentive for them as they look at the area and how to launch. In addition to that. Without a doubt, there will be an impact on restaurants and things of that nature, unemployment, no matter what commitments, you know, we have tried to get out of the. Out of Duke Energy to utilize local labor and certainly that's something that is important to the city. There is no way our job market can produce four hundred plus jobs of the kind of technical nature that will be needed by this. They will need to come in the area. Some of them will need to stay at hotels, probably more than we will even be able to offer, quite frankly. And I will just note that even on a busy wedding weekend, not even necessarily a festival weekend, we will run out of hotel rooms in Dixon with our current capacity. So there is no doubt whatsoever. That they will be part of those first stabilizing years for new hotels, should they finish coming to town. There is no doubt whatsoever that they will be utilizing our existing restaurants and businesses and shopping. As well as any new ones that would come as part of the I eighty eight gateway project. And so that was a big difference for the city. We've had some more time to game plan how to capitalize on this project. Ourselves, in addition to the long term tax revenue that our sister government's good, which again, the city of Dixon will not be getting. That's a bit of a game changer. That's a bit of a game changer and also we will continue to look at some of that going forward. I think it's also important to note that the the city recognizes as a rural community. The advantages of both tech and solar and energy production that are there. How we can synergize that with the reputation of Dixon and Lee County. As we continue to bring in new businesses such as Moxie Solar in Dixon, which does solar panel. For commercial and residential levels, right? So those are the kind of businesses that as we build up a reputation for tech and. Solar alternative energy and energy production that the city is consciously thinking about and trying to work with. For those reasons. The city of Dixon unanimously at the council level has switched from a position of neutrality to a position of support. We do support this project. We do think its long term impacts will be beneficial. Certainly as others have mentioned, we will keep our eye on watershed and all of the things that the municipality is always watching for, right? So. We certainly like that we've heard from the environmental experts and the. Water experts and things of that nature, but we will continue to do our own work over the years as I'm sure the county will to make sure those are being adhered to. We by no means consider the book closed. But I do want to say officially in my capacity as mayor representing the city, we are supportive of this project.
Thank you. All right, continuing in the room.
I'm Pete Hermes and I am support. I'm a participating landowner. I probably questioned the twenty five it's benefiting. I've got eight brothers that we own the farm, so there's. There's nine right on that property right there. So I suspect it's closer to a hundred if you include the sisters, brothers, aunt, daughters. Parents, what have you. You know, I don't know that you can stop progress. I mean. I think it's pretty well known that solar energy is the future. It's better for the environment. As far as the aesthetics are concerned, I think the. The people that should be most concerned about the aesthetics are the ones, probably the participating ones are the ones that are closest to it. And Duke's been very good about negotiating. We can put bushes in front. We can do things to help those aesthetics. So you won't be seeing them, you know, outside your your property line. The. Get my notes together here a little bit. In terms of prime farmland. I think if you look at soil maps, you'd see that most of those soils are class B, low B to mid B. They're not class A farm. There's a few farms in our, but most, most of them are class B soils. Not considered top of the prime farmer. And again, Duke's been very open to suggestions. Yeah, I mean, if we if we didn't have the zoning going out to South Dixon. None of that development would happen, you know, we have to, we have to think forward and we have to think, you know, look to the future. Thank you much.
Anybody else in the room? Thank you. Good to see your hand. Why don't you start with your name? And Margaret, you want to come up and use the mic? Help my core reporter again with the spelling of your last name.
Brecchon is B R E C H O N.
And where do you either live, work, or own a business in relation to this project?
I live about two miles from the project in Dixon.
Go ahead.
Well, I wasn't really prepared to speak tonight, but I will do my best. First of all, I object to the. Project being so close to the city county, city border, the city limits. I know there's advantages, but it's going to. Make it impossible for expansion in this area. For the city to go expand their city limits. The second thing is that. I'm concerned that. That this project might interfere with the already. Existing power grid. I'm sorry, I wasn't here to hear that or I was. Watching on Zoom and maybe didn't catch it, but. There is that possibility. Since this project only goes is effective forty percent. That means every time there's darkness or no sunlight. This project does not generate any electricity. So this intermittent. Going in and out of the prior highway grid, I'd like to know if that would affect it. And the next thing. Is that it seems that the goal of the government now. Both state and federal is to get us one hundred percent renewable energy. Nuclear, solar, water and. Wind. And these are not reliable. And I was doing a lot of research in the last week. In a book called unsettled. And people are. Convinced that we are in a climate crisis, that if we don't do something in the next. You know, depending upon who you see or hear. You know, it could be ten years, twenty years, but we got to do something now. With this expert. He was a PhD. He worked for the Obama administration in their energy. Division. And after leaving government, he looked at this and said, we are not in a climate crisis. That we're not the, the oceans are only rising about a foot every one hundred years. There's nothing that's happening that we can't. Control or. Adjust to. So there are other ways besides becoming one hundred percent. Renewable energy. He said to just. Build up your other resources. The. Hurricane in Louisiana. In Katrina, they had water all over the place because Levi levees broke. Well, now they went back and they got stronger levees and they had no water. The levees held. This is one of the in. The ways that you can mitigate natural disasters. He says that we're not having any more. Disasters like this than we've had over, you know, the last hundred years or so. These are things that come up. The one that I really upset object to is the way the media. Does not tell us the truth about climate change. They keep saying it's the. One of the things is wildfires. And President Trump went to California. And had a round table discussion with several people in that area. Plus the governor Newsom and the governor is saying, oh, it was all climate change. Well, in this discussion, there was somebody that was a expert in forestry management. And he said. Well, the president said, no, he thought it was. The lack of forestry management, the cost of fire. And this. Expert in forestry said the president's right. It was a lack of management for the forests. Well, I thought, you know, this is going to be headline news. But it wasn't. When I saw the article in the Dixon paper from the Associated Press. No mention was made of this man's comment. That this was all caused because they did not manage their forest properly. They got an expert from Yale University to tell them, oh yeah, it was all. Forest, it was all climate change. And I was so mad, I didn't even read the rest of the article. So. I'm just concerned that we are going too fast in getting all of this renewable energy. That we should sit back, look at the science, send, spend more time seeing if we really need to do all this. Before we get into the point where this is all we have because. There's a, we can see right now that fossil fuels are being almost banned. Our gas prices are going up because they don't have more. Wells, they don't give, get oil from other country. Well, we have to get oil from other countries now. But they banned the oil. Pipeline from Canada. They canceled a lot of the contracts for. Drilling for oil and so forth. So this is not something we should ignore. And we should be aware of, there are other ways of. Dealing with the climate rather than to go one hundred percent renewable energy. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room? Yes, sir. Let's get started with your name and where you either live reside or own a business.
Yeah, my name is Len Saunders and I'm a business representative with the carpenters local seven ninety. On behalf of the fifty two thousand members of our regional council, which obviously they don't all live in Lee County. And the Chicago Regional Council of Carpenters. And specifically carpenters local seven ninety, which is the members that I represent. I write in support of the five hundred watt solar project. Located on the three thousand eight hundred and fifty acres located in Lee County, Illinois. Contingent on the use of our skilled local union labor. The highly trained carpenters from Lee and surrounding counties look forward. To helping Lee County satisfy the need for renewable energy. The Chicago Regional Council of Carpenters recognizes. The enormous potential of the new clean energy economy. The South Dixon Solar Project will bring good pain, construction jobs that help lift the middle class. And make surrounding communities a great place to live and work. That's what I have written down. I don't know if I can submit that into the minutes or not on this letterhead, but um.
Closing arguments are just that.
Okay. Beyond that.
Says this lady to my right is.
Right. Beyond that, green energy, we all know it's 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 coming. It's popping up all over the region, not only in Lee County, but all the counties around. We currently have. Hundreds of carpenters that are installing this, the piling, the racking, the modules, the fencing. You know, the four hundred and fifty jobs that they're talking about. Easily half of those would probably fall under the carpenter category. When you look at a solar field, the piling, the racking, the modules. I mean, that's eighty five percent of it, the wiring, the electrical work that follows with a little bit of civil work that's in there. So it's important to us that these projects get passed in a respectful way to the landowners, the community. And I know our members would surely appreciate it. Like I said, we have hundreds of members that live. Over three hundred members that live in Lee County. So it is in our backyard and. You know, the mayor spoke of, you know, having a hard time meeting those four hundred and fifty jobs from right here. I don't think we'll have a problem. So if you consider that, I appreciate it. Thanks.
Anybody else in the room? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Jonathan Mix, M I X. My name is Jonathan Mix, business representative for Millwright Local twenty one fifty eight. Our jurisdiction covers the Lee County area. I fully support the South Dixon Solar Project based on the information I've learned from the previous meetings held. This project will be a great economic booster for the area. To my understanding, all fields in the South Dixon Solar Project will be inspected for proper drainage tile functions. The tile systems in place will be located so they can either be avoided or rerouted to ensure proper drainage continues. When inspection takes place, if the tiles are broke, not functioning or degraded, they will be replaced, fixed or upgraded with better new tiles. Three thousand eight hundred and thirty eight acres of land will be up to today's standards of drainage tile. By doing this, the land will be in a better state than it was previously. From the testimony from Tom Huddleston, who's a third generation drainage contractor and has forty five years of experience. I believe this beneficial not to only the current landowners, but the future landowners as well. This will increase the land value due to being inspected and possibly upgraded with proper drainage. The chance of stagnant water that can be associated with disease like West Nile will be lessened. Drainage that can be filtered by gra- by the ground is. Cleaner than the water that doesn't have a chance to be filtered going back into our waterways. The grass that will be maintained on the solar site will also help with the value of the land. Unlike agricultural fields that have poor water absorption and sediment runoff into the waterways. The planted grass and vegetation will allow better absorption and less sediment runoff. With the project transforming the site back to a grassland type setting, this will also contribute to better air quality. There will be less airborne contamination due to farming activities. With a child who has severe allergies, the better air quality would greatly help. The worst time for ham is in the spring when the fields are being cultivated and in the fall during the different harvest seasons. With the solar project being a grass and plant vegetation, the use of potential. Cancer cancer causing pesticides, herbicides and insecticides application spraying over top of the field will no longer be needed. There will no longer be the chance for the chemicals to drift into the air into undesirable locations. The groundwater supply will no longer be in threat from these hazardous chemicals that are used to protect the crops and from insects, plant disease and bacteria. This would be a great opportunity. Economically for the area. Not only would the city see more money in tax revenue, which I found out is the case. But extra income spent during the construction phase of the project, local workers on the project will reinvest in the local economy. There will be more people in the area shop local before, during and after work. Currently, we harvest crops that we turn into power, go through a multiple step process that takes significant amount of time, resource and energy. With the Dixon Solar Project, we can be part of the future and harvest the energy directly from the sun instantly. That's the writing I had, but as I sit here through the meetings, there's some notes I take down that I'd also like to speak on. Back when I used to work in the field before going to work, I'd always stop at a gas station or a drive through to grab some essentials for the day. Pop, energy drinks, Twinkies. I mean, all construction workers do it. And I mean, you can call my wife and ask her how many times she's told me to stop doing that. Not only for my health, but for our bank account. With that being said, my home life, after I get done working, even though working late hours, there's three children at home that. Consume food faster than a small zoo. So I'm always getting the honey do list. Can you pick this stuff up on the way home, whether it's, you know, I'm working local or an hour away from home, the family needs to eat. I I'm gonna stop as close as I can before coming home. As a mill rate, we have almost a thousand technically skilled mill rates. In our local jurisdiction that can help make this project a successful phase, just as Lynn stated, the carpenters. We're here to support this. And if we look at just the typical supply and demand, everyone knows when there's a huge. Demand for an object and a little bit of supply, those prices are through the roof. As we look at the things we hold in our hands today, the cell phones, we go home, we turn on a TV. As we look at the things we hold in our hands today, the cell phones, we go home, we turn on a TV, we have a phone, we have the microwave, everything runs on electricity. Where we get it from should be clean and green. It's why I personally support this project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room?
Phil Mano, that's M-A-N-N-O, and just to piggyback off of my colleagues over there, I am a rep for 790. I, we cover from DeKalb County to the Mississippi River. We've seen a lot of solar projects go in. We've never ran into any problems with land erosion or anything else. But just to bring it up, you know, this is prime farmland as we talk about, and going through DeKalb County every morning, DeKalb County is prime farmland. DeKalb corn, they've got their own sign. And with the, with the help of DeKalb County and the city manager, they actually brought Facebook into the area. $3.5 billion project, roughly about 2,000 workers there every day on Phase 1. After that, it implemented a candy company, Farrar Candy Company moved out of the city and put up a warehouse, and they're gonna build a manufacturing plant that's gonna create a lot of new jobs also. So sitting in these hearings and listening to a lot of this stuff, I learned a lot. I heard 450 men or workers every single day. Just some rough calculations, that's over $200 million in payroll. And if you think for one second that you're not gonna get any of that money from those workers, you got another thing coming. Remember, the electric cars here. We all thought electric cars weren't coming. Look outside, there's a lot of farmers with Teslas, and I could bring a lot of them in here. They're electric. So on my behalf and my members that I'm here for, I support this solar project and any other solar project. Thank you.
Okay, if we're gonna keep going, we're gonna, yeah, I see him. Just, just hold on, Charlie. Is there anybody on Zoom? I'm not ignoring you. I'm trying to plan. Just hold on. Is there anybody on Zoom that wants to give a closing argument or, or public statement? If so, I'm sorry. If there's somebody on Zoom who's going to want to give a public comment or closing argument, would you please just raise, I'm not gonna call on you right now. I'm just trying to get a feel of where we are. Okay, I, I'm, I think we're gonna have to go to another night. Could be a while. You just got one. Two now. Listen. All right. We will see everybody Wednesday, the 3rd of November, 6 o'clock here at the old Lee County Courthouse. November 3rd, 6 o'clock.